I'm so happy to welcome back Vadim Mazursky. Thanks for coming back to the show.
It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me.
And Kristen, welcome back.
Thank you.
Thanks for co-hosting this one. Last time you weren't here when Vadim was here. So this will be special.
I know. I'm happy to be here with Vadim, who I, everybody knows I unabashedly support. So I'm thrilled to be here with him.
Yeah. And I'm going to intro myself because somebody emailed me because I don't never do. I'm Andy. You can follow me on Instagram Northwest First Podcast. I'm on Twitter. That's about it. You can follow me on YouTube, obviously.
Yeah, Google Andy Chandler and his YouTube will pop up.
I try to make it about the guest. So, but yeah, welcome back. I'm curious Vadim, just kind of how things are going. As we're recording this is kind of almost early September. So I'm curious like what you're hearing out there from people when you're campaigning and at these events and stuff and just how it's going out there.
Yeah, it's going really good. I mean, there's a obviously a lot of confusion right now about city elections, mayoral elections, county elections. I think there's about 100 candidates that are out there right now. And so trying to break through with that, through that with people all the time, I get questions about what district people are in. Because District One for the county is District Four for the city or large chunk of it at least. And so there's quite a bit of confusion, but I'm out there every day in public somewhere. So if you look at my Instagram, Vote Vadim, my Facebook or my Twitter slash X, you will see that I'm out there a lot. And what I really enjoy is being in public places. So this weekend I was over at the Hawthorne Street Fair and walking around and talking to people, got a lot of positive feedback. And actually, one of the store owners came out and said they recognized me because I was carrying my sign. So probably they recognized my sign, but they were supporters. And then I, farmers markets, especially Hillsdale, I think is a wonderful farmer's market, but PSU as well. Take my child over there in the stroller. I put my sign above the stroller. So I'm shopping, but I'm also, if people want to stop by and talk to me, we'll talk about that. And, you know, so a lot of it is being out there and, you know, more or less I hear the same themes. You know, the polling reflects what people are concerned about homelessness, particularly homelessness caused by drug addiction, mental illness in our streets. That I, number one question that I get, public safety, a lot of concerns about public safety. People don't feel safe walking around their neighborhoods. They're still worried about the crime. They're worried about some of the murders that we're hearing about in the press. And, you know, generally we're doing better than a couple of years ago. We were still doing far worse than 2019 and people are feeling it. They still see the broken windows. They still see the thefts. They read about REI leaving and the Target downtown leaving and some of these businesses that are leaving because of all the break-ins that they've had and the thefts. And the fact that nobody's doing anything about it. But surprisingly, it's, it's themes that you don't normally hear a lot about that you learn by talking to people individually. And, you know, taxes are kind of a big theme. I hear quite a bit about people that are in Portland and wondering why they're paying so much. Or, and this is the tragedy, people who lived in Portland are still coming out to Hillsdale because it's close to, you know, someplace that they live in on a corporate or Washington County or what have you. And, and they say, we sold our house, you know, six months ago, a year ago, we just decided to leave. It cost me quite a bit of money, but we got the tax bill. And I'm paying $30,000 with the taxes on my house. And what am I getting?
Yeah. And that's, I hear that a lot too on this. I had a candidate a couple of weeks ago that was like, we're the highest taxed county with the least services kind of thing. At least it feels that way to a lot of taxes.
It's not just that. I mean, that Anthony Effing article, they left that, I mean, detailed that we're losing a billion dollars a year in Multnomah County. And that for what people make based on what those taxes are, we're the highest taxed place in the country. Like people who make 100 and some, I think $125,000 or more as individuals and 200, might be 250 or more as couples are taxed at the same rate as New Yorkers making 25 million or more. I, I, it blew me away.
Yeah, it's a big, it's a big jump. And obviously, yeah.
For like, you said, for what?
That's the one thing I hear. I'm sure you hear too, is just people don't see those services provided.
And you gotta look at it in context as well. So Kristen's absolutely right. If you're making more than 25 million, then New York has the highest tax rate. So if any of your viewers are making than 25 million, congratulations. You, you're paying less than New York. If you're making less than 25 million, Multnomah has the highest tax rate in the country. But New York houses all their homeless people. You know, they have hotel rooms. They have apartments. They, they have places for everybody to stay, you know, and, and that's part of what they're doing with the high tax rate. Now they're paying less taxes than we are, but they're able to do more than we are. And that's the question, you know, their police force is higher staffing than our police force. Their response times are better. Your, whatever the figures you look at, other jurisdictions are doing better with less than we are. And I think people are starting to figure out. I mean, the press is writing about it a little bit and people are tuning in, but certainly when they get their tax bill and they're looking at it and they're like, wait, my, my road's not paved. I don't have a sidewalk.
Schools.
Potholes.
We can't use the public schools.
So I think people are catching on a little bit and they want some accountability. And that's, you know, why I'm running. I'm asking for accountability for the Joint Office of Homeless Services. Now I got a lot of pushback from that for people who get money from the Joint Office of Homeless Services. But we got to make sure that people who are trying to get by day to day, save a little bit of money for their kids tuition and college and things like that. We want to make sure that one, they don't leave because it's too high here. Two is if they're willing to pay those taxes, that they know where it's going.
Look, I think, I think most of them, and, and, and I don't know what you've heard, and this is all obviously anecdotal. But, but I think most people are happy to do it if they get something for it.
Yeah.
I mean, is that what you're hearing?
That's what I'm hearing as well. People are like, you know, I've lived in Portland, in the Hillsdale, there was an individual, I've lived in Portland for 30 years and I just moved away. I hated it. I love Portland. I still love Portland, but I refuse to be part of that. And, and that's the thing. They love this city. And I think, you know, for me likewise, I mean, that's why I'm running for office. It's heartbreaking to see what's happened and you want to roll up your sleeves and help. But I also understand people that, you know, move away because it just makes financial sense to do that. And, you know, there, it's a beautiful city, you know, from a Realtor's term, the bones are, you know, solid here. We have nature close by. We have mountains and we have a lot of things that are, will bring people here. But unfortunately we created a system where people are moving away.
Yeah. I mean, this is from that article, starting in 2017, this is Willamette Week. Multnomah County voters passed several tax measures aimed at improving life in their burgeoning city after metro. And the county levied taxes to combat homelessness, just as you said Vadim, and provide preschool for all. So that would be a county program championed by Jessica Vega Peterson, who's currently the county chair. Portland now has the second highest total state and local income tax rate in the nation, 14.69% exceeded only by New York City at 14.78%. So it's not huge difference. And it says, that's the top marginal tax rate. Meaning you pay it only on income above 125,000 for individuals, 250, 250,000 for married couples filing together. By comparison, the only New Yorkers paying the rate there are those making 25 million or more, single or married.
And it's just a constant.
It's mind blowing.
It's a, I would call it a chronic problem that I categorize in the city and the county. If we collect, we're good at collecting money. But translating that into services that are visible and kind of tactile is, is a difficult thing.
Or just services.
And yeah, that's why it's so important that I'm saying vote for Vadim because I feel like in the county, we have a couple of good people. On there. And if we get one more, we can have this kind of leverage that we need to kind of change things in the county.
And this is what this election is about. It's about me running for change and supporting the changes that Julie Brim Edwards and Sharon Myron are trying to do. A lot of that is accountability, like make, let's make sure it works. Let's have planning. Let's talk about the fentanyl crisis. Let's have a plan for it rather than ignoring it. Believe it or not, that was actually up for a vote and it lost three to two to have a plan on fentanyl. But you touched upon, you know, let's, let's, you know, cross that T with the, and dot the I's with the taxes, you know, preschool for all. As, as perhaps your listeners know, now I have a 17 month old daughter. Okay. I think she was 14 months or something last time I was here. And, and I'm fortunate enough to be able to afford preschool. Okay. Or daycare. So the odd thing about going to daycare is I had this conversation with both the daycare that she is in currently, but also we're switching ones to a new one. So my experience with two daycare places in central Portland, both of them said that, you know, we tried to join the preschool for all with the county. But we had changing stories about what their requirements were, meetings we go to, we didn't know how to participate. And both of them were there from the very beginning. And they said, one of them decided not to participate at all because they couldn't figure out what the requirements were, even though they were attending these meetings. The second one wanted to participate. So the one I'm currently in is, is in downtown Portland. And they had 12 spots that were available. They had room. They had the teachers there. They wanted to have 12 spots set aside for preschool for all. Which is, has gotten hundreds of millions of dollars more than expected. And that money is sitting around because they're not building out the spaces in order to be able to actually get kids in that, in those preschools to the levels that we need to make it universal. And they're like, we had 12, you know, slots. And so we offered it to the preschool for all people to fund and they wouldn't do it. And they said, well, you know, why wouldn't you let us do it? So it took a while to figure out why they were denied. And apparently one of the reasons was because they had a preference, their building has federal employees in it. So if you're a federal employee, you get a preference. Okay, fine. But they said, okay, we won't give a press for these 12. It'll be a whole separate thing altogether. And still they were denied. So imagine that there's organizations out there that have the capacity, that have the space, that have the ability, that have the history of teaching kids. But they're being denied because their bureaucracy is something that the people who work in that industry don't understand.
Yeah. And it's some almost technicality, it sounds like. Like are they saying if the federal employee works at the daycare or just in the facility?
They said they don't want those kinds of preferences. So if you're, if, you know, a federal employee and you get, you know, your foot in the door a little quicker because you're in that building. And so they get preference for people who are federal employees, which, you know, a lot of federal employees don't make a lot of money. And so it's, it's, you know, perhaps makes sense to have a preference. And if you're working that building, it can come down. But whatever, you know, but when they said like, okay, we will waive that preference for these groups and they were still denied, that makes no sense. Yeah. And when you have hundreds of millions of dollars sitting around and you're not letting at least 12 kids have those, those spots.
Well, and I was going to say this, also this, I would call it just basic transparency seems to be a problem with, I would say JVP specifically, but, um, but I was going to segue into, because I know there's a lot of controversy over the transparency of the other preschool. I don't know if they qualify for preschool for all.
Oh, you're talking about it.
Buckman suing the deflection center now officially suing the county.
Can we put a pin in this preschool for all taxes thing though, for a minute? Because I think Vadim is pointing out something important that he's hearing from his constituents about raising taxes. And, you know, Sophie Peel did a piece in Willamette Week, February 7th of this year stating that Multnomah County is now saying they can't fund preschool for all without raising taxes by 0.8%. So, so that's another tax increase. And what I think is wild about that is as of the beginning, so this would have been about a month before that, January of, of 2024. We were spending 267, I mean, they did the math, $267,000 per child for about 700 kids to go to preschool.
Yeah. Yeah, that's about right. And, and, you know, the, the thing about this is you want to make sure it works. So California, Washington DC, there's places that have preschool for all. Where it's not an additional tax burden. They found the money to, in order to make that happen. I actually ran into a, a person elected to the state legislature in California, made a discussion about this. And, and, you know, how they were able to do it and what, what they're doing with that. And they have some challenges, no question about it, but they're able to do it without taxing people more. Here we are. And I'm, I'm, I'm a fan of preschool for all. I think if your kid goes to preschool, one, if, if you're low income and you're benefiting from that, you can go to work while your kid is off at school. It's important to do that. Kids get socialized, kids learn quicker and then they go off to some, there's a host of reasons why it's a good thing.
Yeah. Especially in today's day and age, we're learning losses.
And I don't understand why we just don't call it, call it, I mean, I think, I think preschool sounds better, but I don't understand why we just don't call it childcare. Cause I think that's also very, I, I just think that's also very popular.
But you're saying a functional.
There's a functional way to do it.
One would be great.
There's a theme in all this. It's, it's good planning, you know, it's not about just taxing people and trying to shove money out the door, which is what we're doing to a large extent with the SHS, the homeless tax that we have. Preschool tax. There's a lot of taxes where the point seems to be to collect money with the planning being an afterthought. People might realize this, but when the SHS tax got passed, which is a metro tax to collect money to get to the counties to address homelessness. There was no plan at all as to how that money would be dispersed, what the guidelines will be, what the requirements would be. The tax got passed so they could get money and then figure things out later. Let's figure out things first. And then make sure we're spending our, we're getting the kind of money we need and spend it well. I mean, that seems pretty simple, but it's not happening.
Cause like I said, yeah, it does seem like a chronic problem with city and the county to some degree.
Right.
I'm sorry I interrupted you, Andrew, because you were going to talk.
No, I was just going to say, yeah, because we were talking preschool about the preschool that's suing.
Right.
The deflection center, which I believe is on Sandy Boulevard, right?
Yes. And this deflection center is also a county program, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I always set this up, I don't know, just from my perspective, it seems like, like, like I said earlier, the basic transparency, it didn't seem like it was there with the neighborhood and everyone involved. But also it just seemed like, I've said this a few times, that Multnomah County was trying to comply in the most bare minimum way with the new law, HB402, I believe it's called. And that just doesn't seem in the spirit of the law that was passed by Oregon. And, and also just in the spirit of helping people who need treatment. It just seems like they're doing the bare minimum and, and not even talking to the neighborhood that's involved with this. And yeah. But I know you were testifying and helping out with that process. I thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah. I testified a couple of times and, you know, it's a Buckman neighborhood where they put that, where they're planning to put the deflection center. And the deflection center is, you know, within a hundred yards of a preschool. And so I've been there. It's a preschool. It, it actually, that preschool actually does get money from the county.
I was wondering.
And so it services low income people. And, and, and so the people in Buckman, we're not against having the deflection center there ever. Time and time again, they testified, we're okay with having a deflection center here. We just want to make sure it's safe for our kids to be in that area. We want to make sure we understand what the plan is. And we want to make sure our neighborhood doesn't have negative consequences as a result of that, which is not too, too much to ask.
Yeah, just questions. Yeah.
The problem is that everything was decided beforehand. The contract was signed for, for that facility, even before the Buckman neighborhood knew about it. Even before Sharon Myron, who's the commissioner for that district knew about it. So our county chair and our county bureaucracy signed a lease for two years for a building to build this deflection center. Looked as to how they would set aside money for it. The lease is actually pretty good. I think first year it's like $120,000 for a part of a year to pay for this building that's not being used and will be torn down in two years. In the second year, I believe it's $260,000 they'll be paid for that, for the use of that building. And once again, a building that's not being used and will be torn down to build, uh, basically housing over in that area.
Okay. And that, so after two years, they'll destroy it and build housing.
So they want to put money to rehab this building that'll be destroyed. But they did it without telling anybody about it. And then following up with that.
Even the county commissioners, yeah, they were, yeah, kept in the dark. Yeah.
And the questions were Julie Brim Edwards and Sharon Myron were asking questions about this. And they're like, well, can we get out of this? You know, let's say we have a vote right now about this because they were asked to vote on something that they didn't know what the plan was. They weren't part of these conversations for the planning. And they're like, well, what happens if we vote no? And the chair was like, well, we already have a contract for this. That's already where we have to pay for it to rent this place out. So even if you both know the, you know, the county has to pay for this thing.
Obligated.
So it's, it's very odd. Once again, you know, putting money out the door without planning for things first. And now we've seen how it just fallen apart. You know, they wanted, they, the county chair said it has to open by September 1st. Now, the law says that each county has the option of doing a deflection program. A deflection program does not entail having an actual center. That's a very new thing for, you know, Multnomah County. Once again, we're kind of experimenting here a little bit. Deflection programs are, you know, if a police sees somebody with, using drugs, then they cite that person, that person could be arrested. But if that person chooses to go to treatment, then that person is offered that opportunity, whether through court monitoring or something else. You don't actually have to take that person anywhere. You just go offer that opportunity and have someone follow up.
So this whole, yeah, the whole center is an optional kind of approach that they're pursuing, pursuing very quickly.
Yeah.
Seems like, yeah.
Well, the count, I mean, Vadim, isn't it true that the county's interpretation of this reform of measure 110 is inconsistent with every, as far as I know, every other county in Oregon.
I'm not aware of any other county doing a physical brick and mortar deflection center.
Right. But my understanding also, based on what Eli Arnold, who's a running for city council in District Four and is a Portland Bike Squad member. My understanding is, and Dan Rayfield wrote a letter to Jessica Vega Peterson saying, this is not the intent of the reform of measure 110. That the county's plan is to just, and they were having meetings with current DA Mike Schmidt, who is on his way out. That will, will be Nathan Vasquez's office in January, I believe, who, who was voted in. And, and Mike Schmidt lost that election. My understanding is Jessica Vega Peterson and Mike Schmidt were having discussions about what reform of 110 really means. And the interpretation they came up with was, um, yeah, you can go to drug treatment or you can go to jail. But going to drug treatment really just means, could mean anything. I mean, really could mean being dropped off, I don't know, a block away. You don't even have to walk into the door.
Yeah. And so that's what people wanted to know. What is the plan? Do you bring people there? Can they walk right back out? And then if they do, do they get transported back to where they came from? Is there going to be drug uses? Are there going to be dealers outside of there? Like as we saw at the Behavioral Health Resource Center downtown, county opened it up and it became a drug use area. And it took over a year for them to actually address that issue, even though people downtown really suffering it. Well, they, they, it's still open, but it's servicing very few people. And you actually have to go to Old Town to make a reservation to go there. So it's very convoluted.
Didn't they close it for a period of time?
They closed it because.
That was the behavioral.
Yeah.
Right. Health center. And, and it was because, wasn't it because, you know, staff didn't know how to deal with it? They found evidence of drug use. They found.
Yeah. People apparently were doing cocaine inside the shelter. Yeah. So they closed it for a little while to train employees on how to apparently not use cocaine inside of Behavioral Health Resource Center for homeless people. And, and there was a lot of other stuff that was going on there. So, you know, hopefully they fixed those things, but nonetheless, they, you know, they used to have people using drugs outside. And then if the police were there, whatever, they would run into the Behavioral Health Resource Center to avoid prosecution. I mean, these kinds of stories are just odd in that people didn't really think about what it would entail putting a facility like that next to an area where there's a lot of tourism, six hotels, you know, the new Ritz Carlton that was right over there. They're trying to attract people.
Can you imagine? I think those rooms are like $600 a night or something like.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah. And so, you know, once again, it's having a plan. And now they're putting this center next to a daycare, a preschool. And then they had secret meetings about what the plan would be. So, you know, the Buckman people are like, I just want to know what the plan is, you know, are you going to have security outside, inside? What happens if, you know, people have to stay there for a little while? Can they leave right away? If they leave, what happens to them? And there were no answers. And the answers were kind of shifting because the meetings were being held behind closed doors amongst selected people that, that the chair chose to be on that panel. Initially, as was mentioned, you know, our newly elected district attorney, Nathan Vasquez was not even invited to those meetings.
I was just going to say initially he was left out of a lot of those, right? Yeah. I don't know if he still is.
I think they finally started involving him when people reported on it. And, and there was an outcry about, well, how, how in the heck is the district attorney that, that, district attorney elect supposed to engage in any kind of enforcement or investigation of this law that he needs to implement?
It seems like setting everyone up for failure when you don't include the incoming leader of.
But you know, this is all very consistent. I mean, when they, when Multnomah County came out with a budget for, for the, for 2025. And, and when Mike Schmidt, the current DA, came out with his budget for 2025, there's nothing in those budgets about rehab, detox, drug treatment, as we would understand it to be, as in an off ramp for getting off of drugs. There's no plan for that. There's no money for it. There's money for a lot of needles.
Yeah. And I think that's almost where it breaks.
I mean, it was.
Down or like kind of is a cross section for me of like, um, what this ultimate decision and ultimately they cheat, the county delayed it till October now, right? But it just, to me, it kind of comes down to like, do you want to help? Do you believe first of all, that there's an addiction problem? And then you, do you want to help those people?
Yeah.
Cause I think there's still a lot of people who believe that it's not worth investing in or like having this kind of treatment stuff. Cause I remember you just said a second ago, reminded me, I know there's a lot of questions still today, right? About how many, the number of times you can be dropped off before there's some kind of required treatment or something.
Eli thought it was unlimited.
Yeah. And I think that.
I don't think that question's answered.
Could still be the case, maybe. I don't know.
You know, so there's a 57 page draft plan. I don't know whether they've actually finalized it, but apparently you have 30 days to seek treatment. And if you're arrested twice within 30 days and the second time you go to jail, but if it's more than 30 days, then you get a restart on the whole thing. So let's say you get dropped off at the center, you walk right out back the door and you're, you know, back downtown, what have you. Now the question is who goes to that center? That's a whole separate question.
And is that an arrest? Does that count as an arrest? I mean, Aaron Schmaltz's question, he's the head of the police union, the Portland Police Association. His question was, we have no guidance from the county about what counts as an arrest. Is that not an arrest because they've chosen to go to the deflection center? And if that's not an arrest, that never comes into play.
So let's step back a little bit and see the big picture because we're getting into little details about the deflection center and it's a mess, you know, it's not starting on time.
Yeah, please.
The school is actually doing a lawsuit. So the school is suing because everything was behind closed doors and the open meeting laws were not followed. But, um, you know, the, the problem is we don't have a drop off center, a sobering center. So Portland had a sobering center until 2019. And Central City Concern ran it. I believe the budget was $2 million. And, um, uh, they, they serviced about 5,000 people a year, sometimes less, but around 5,000. Initially, they serviced as many as 20,000 people a year, but because of, uh, methamphetamines and, and at that point in time, fentanyl was not as big of a deal. But heroin and methamphetamines at that point in time, people were getting violent. So they had to only take care of a small number of people, but still 5,000 people. Then it closed down because things were too violent and Central City Concern could not deal with it. Now, all those violent people that an organization couldn't deal with were left in our streets. So our neighborhoods, our people living in Portland, visiting Portland had to deal with that violence that professionals were unable to deal with. So then there were a group of individuals, including county representatives, city representatives, providers like Central City Concern and other ones. They came in and they've made a report over the course of two years where they studied this, you know, very in detail about what that next sobering center would look like. They wanted to have about 90 beds and, and servicing about 9,000 people a year, what they felt because of fentanyl and everything else.
Twice that previous number.
They felt it would need to service that many. Uh, the county commission did nothing with that. Even though the county commission, some of their representatives, including Sharon Myron, were on that committee, providing feedback on what that would look like. It never came up for a vote. So then fast forward a little bit. Now Julia Brim Edwards is on that, uh, is on the county commission. And she's like, well, we still need a sobering center. The police say we need to take people somewhere. It can't be jail, can't be the emergency room. We need a sobering center because that leads to detox, that leads to transitional care. And then people will hopefully remain sober. Well, you know, then a report comes out similar to the first one, uh, with a price tag of about $25 million. The, uh, our, our own legislature provides that $25 million to stand up a sobering center. This very much needed sober center we haven't had since 2019. And instead we get a deflection center where at most in two years, they'll have 16 beds instead of, you know, the beds that we need. Where by their own math, they're saying they're able to, uh, service about 300 people a year.
Are you kidding me? 16 beds?
16 beds.
That just seems like something like a small town would do or some, I don't know.
Yeah. And then what's, what's the point? Why not go full speed ahead on a sobering center? In the meantime, Washington County has broken ground on, on their own sobering centers. So they don't.
Oh yeah. Washington and Clackamas are so far ahead of us.
Also building one or buying one or something like that.
They're so far ahead of us on this. Honestly, every county in Oregon is working to implement the reforms to measure 110. And Multnomah County seems to be the only place that is uninterested.
And I was going to say, because I think people get confused a lot in the city of who controls what, but services are squarely in the domain of the county, right? All these kinds of social services. Yeah.
The county either has the health department and the social workers there as well as medical staff, or it directly funds services.
Drugs, homelessness. Um, this is all county, is it not?
Yes.
Yeah. The sheriff's office, county corrections, county. That's all county. I think people forget, everybody's blaming Ted Wheeler for this homelessness crisis. And I'm not saying that, that he's blame free, but I think there is a lack of scrutiny that's only recently started thanks to Willamette Week, who I think has done a great job on uncovering what's going on in the county. But I will, and Nigel, Jake was, Jacque was, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, but he, he was doing some work about Deborah Cofory, the former chair and the kinds of, the lack of mojo that was going on there.
Missed opportunities.
Yeah. Missed opportunities. I mean, just, but neglect really of these things, kinds of things. And so I just think that's important Vadim, because, um, I think people forget. And so I just think that's important, Vidim, because, um, I think people forget, people just see, oh, there's a county race and I don't really know what they do. I'm focused on the city of Portland circling the drain.
That's why I was trying to get, cause yeah, I, I love to get people interested in the county election. Cause it is really important because it's does all these services that we're.
And when we poll the top, it doesn't matter who does the polling, but it seems to be that the top issues that people are concerned with is, and I know you're hearing about taxes, but crime, okay? Well, county corrections, sheriff's office, you know, they can, Nicole Busher, I don't know if you heard her episode on here or my podcast, Rational Portland, which of course you've been on a couple of times, Vidim, but you know, she said, Multnomah County is refusing to fund jail beds. So the, the people that they're jailing, they're the most violent offenders, the most violent. Everybody else is just walking, they process them and they're walking around because they think if they reduce jail beds, they'll reduce crime. So there you go. There's crime. Homelessness, that's squarely within the purview of the county. Drugs squarely within the purview of the county. And so it seems to me that the focus really needs to be on these county races.
And that's why I'm running. Uh, I ran for city council a couple of years ago and people keep asking about homelessness. Now I can talk about homelessness all day long, but the county is in charge of the policies and the money. And that's the number one thing that is facing our region, you know? Getting people who need help to the services. Some are ready for housing directly. A lot of them are not. Drug addiction, mental illness, uh, precludes people from being able to be housed by themselves. And you need to get them into a continuum of care and we're not doing that. You know, I, I recently had a conversation with Jesse Burke. We were at, uh, the society hotel, um, and you know, as always at the society hotel, there's people with mental illness walking around, drug use in that same block, just the kitty corner over. I saw a fight as I'm going to Jesse Burke's with people being, somebody was, uh, fighting with another person while somebody else was smoking fentanyl in that area. And I, I don't know what caused the fight. I'm not, um, interceding in that, but that's what you deal with in that area. I'm talking to Jesse Burke and just like, I've been here seven years. I do not see any outreach workers. I stare out this window every single day. I'm not seeing anybody come out and talk to these people. We're leaving people to suffer on the streets. They hurt themselves. They hurt other people from time to time. And the county is just sitting back and hoping that somebody does something about it without having a plan for what that would look like. And that's, that's the tragedy of all this. We have enough money. The county has about $400 million for a joint office of homeless services, home forward, about another $300 million that the housing. And so $700 million a year that is going toward getting people housed. And it's hard to see what successes we're dealing with.
I mean, Vidim, Sharon, Sharon Myron has said for years, the county has so much money, they can't spend it all. I mean, she's actually said, our problem is we have too much.
And my opponent says she's able to find more money using Medicare, which if there's a secret plan out there that you know about, please share it. But it's not about the money. It's not about the money. I mean, we, we, every year we actually set aside about 15% of the homeless services funds. Last year we didn't spend all of it. This year we're claiming to spend all of it, but actually a large chunk of it was set aside for use later. So we didn't spend all of it. And, and yet, you know, um, people are talking about more money like my opponent is, it's about policies, it's about policies that work. Let's do what Washington County did. Let's do what Salt Lake City did, or New Orleans, or places like Houston that had success.
I mean, we, we can walk to, like you said, we can walk to Washington County or Clarkhamas County. They, they just came out with that. And I know that point in time report is, um, notoriously flawed because it's a self-reporting report, but the federal government makes us do it. And I think the takeaway from that, uh, that was stunning to me is that they seem to have decreased homelessness in the metro area, neighboring counties, and we, we haven't budged. I mean, if anything, ours has increased.
Yeah.
It's increased.
I've heard that from some candidates on there.
So we don't even have to go very far.
For the cities that the joint office continues to spend more, but our homeless population is increasing.
Yeah.
As the more we spend.
And so, I mean, it's expensive to live in Beaverton as well. There's lots of places where it's expensive to live, you know? Clarkhamas County has, uh, um, expensive places as well. So if it's expensive housing, they should be also seeing their homelessness increase. What they're seeing is in Clarkhamas County, I believe 60% decrease in homelessness, uh, year over year. And then, um, or over two years, and then Washington County said they've eliminated homelessness.
Right. That's right.
And, and you know, it's, it's really easy to tell what they did. I mean, they're willing to share their plan with anybody.
Yeah.
It's basically, you know, send social workers out there, get a buy names list. So you know who you're dealing with. And if they are, you know, uh, they return to homelessness, you know what services they need? And get them, build out your shelter capacity, build out, you know, safe rest villages, whatever we have here in Portland. But, you know, they have motel rooms there as well in Washington County and get people there where they can have the services. Don't leave them on the streets to fend for themselves. A lot of them can't. Get them off the streets. You're helping them. You're helping the rest of the neighborhoods that they live in. You're bringing stability. And, you know, we're seeing success elsewhere. Why not just, you know, pattern that success here? It's, it's odd that we don't do that.
Yeah. What, I was just kidding. What do you attribute that to? Is that just ideology and people digging their heels in? From the positioning we've taken over the past several years of like, basically the chairs, the chairs saying, I was right about this and I'm not budging kind of thing.
Yeah, there's, it's definitely that. It's ideology versus practical solutions. You know, we've had two votes, again, Sharon Meyer and Julie Brem Edwards toward practical solutions. Here's, here's what works. Here's what the studies say. Here's evidence based. And then we have ideology, which is, um, no, we want to, um, you know, the, the drug kits, for instance, you know? Is there a reason to provide fentanyl supplies to people on the streets? It's not syringes where you're stopping AIDS or things like that. Now, you know, that's, that's the question here. Do we just keep on doing the same thing over and over and over, even if it's failing? You know, that's the definition of insanity, right? Or do you try something new? And by new, I mean new for us, not new for the rest of the country. And I think that's, you know, it's, it's pretty simple. You know, we try what works in other places and there's people that are running that are willing to say that. Now, unfortunately, right now at the county, people are not willing to do that.
And what is your, because I don't know this actually, but how's, what is your opponent's kind of position on all this? Okay. So. Treatment and all that stuff.
You know, the, um, my opponent, first of all, is, is nowhere to be seen. So it's really hard to get a gauge on what she actually believes in. And so that's the difference. I'm out there. You can Google me. You'll see that I've talked about this, um, all over the place. My opponent has not. She's come out of nowhere and she's staying quiet. We don't need someone in our county commission that's staying quiet. We need someone that's advocating. I was testifying at the Buckman neighborhood meetings, um, uh, about the deflection center. She was nowhere to be seen. So first you got to figure out what it is that she actually intends, because so far her speeches have been about raising more money. But the, well, Lamalique actually ran a pretty good article, I believe Lucas Manfield wrote it about, um, how NAMI, the National Association for Mental Illness in Oregon here, the chapter in Oregon is saying, we actually need to lower the bar to get temporary commitment for people with mental illness that are living in our streets or really elsewhere as well, but live in our streets. People with schizophrenia walking around, half of whom don't even realize they have schizophrenia. And, uh, we have the highest bar toward getting people into just a temporary care where we can get them medication, get them counsel and get them treatment and stabilize them. The highest bar in the country here, you have to.
That's right.
A lot of boxes you have to check to get.
So NAMI is saying, um, well, we need to lower that. We need the legislature to lower that. So the people we represent, people with mental illness can actually get treatment. My opponent said that that was ridiculous. So in the article, she said that that's not something that she believes in.
That's bizarre.
Do you live in where you just walk downtown, you'll see people walking around with machetes, you'll see people naked, you'll see people talking to themselves. You'll see people die. There was a, an individual that died just last week. You know, I, I was, uh, speaking with, uh, uh, Scott Kerman of our Blanche House and another individual, he told me a kind of a similar story. A person that they knew had very serious mental illness. She apparently had Tourette's syndrome, but when she was on medication, uh, she did fine. But as with people with mental illness, sometimes they fall off the medications and people were trying to get her help. The police force was trying to get her help, but because of our really high bar and getting people to the services that they need to get those medications, she was left on her own. And even though she was posing a danger herself, she'd walk in the middle of the street sometime.
Actually, I'm not even kidding. That happened to me yesterday when I was coming from work and this woman just came up and knocked on everyone's window on, right on 82nd. And it's just, I, nobody knows what to do in those situations. And it's just.
And you call 311 and then, you know.
Yeah.
Oh, then get on, be on hold for 30 minutes. Yeah.
But I was just thinking like, that almost seems like an answer like that is, uh, indicates that that person, your opponent, doesn't think mental health is like a chronic problem in this country and in this city and.
Again, it's ideology versus practical, because the result of the inaction on the part of our county to do anything, people knew about this individual. They were asked to help, but nobody was sent out to do it. And so this individual, at I believe five o'clock in the morning was crossing Burnside and got hit by a car and died. Warning signs all over the place, interaction with our public safety system, interaction with social workers, I'm not social workers, but providers who all asked for help, but because of, uh, inaction on the part of our county to get this person the treatment, because of the high barrier we have in order to do that. But nonetheless, and my opponent says that that's ridiculous. I mean, that, that is a crying shame and it's, people are dying because of it.
Vidim, are you, and, and just for some context for maybe people who don't know, I mean, my dad was severely mentally ill to the point of living on the streets. And as a person whose fam, I mean, he's passed away now, but as a person whose family member really needed intervention and I couldn't, I wasn't going to make him take his medication. I can't do that. I mean, I set up psychiatrist appointments for him. I got him committed to a hospital for 24 hours, but I, this is the Pacific Northwest is, it's all very similar up and down the Pacific Northwest. It's if you decide that you're, I mean, he, I got him to say, I finally got him to say publicly he was suicidal. The next day he felt better, said he wasn't, now he's back on the street. There was just no intervention whatsoever. And I have not heard from a family member of somebody, and my sister's a homeless opioid addict. I, I have not heard from a family member who says that they're okay with their family being left on the street to die. And that's what's going on. They're dying. Have you heard from your potential constituents about, from family members about, um, loved ones that they're concerned about who are on the streets of Multnomah County or who they want to get help for?
Well, I, I have not actually heard of anybody that has people living on the streets of Multnomah County. I have heard from an individual that had somebody that passed away. But I hear stories like yours, somebody has relatives, friends with very serious mental illness that on medications are fine, off medications are not. And what we're doing is leaving these people on the street. You know, I, I will walk downtown with any viewer out there, uh, my email is vadeem@votevadeem. If you don't believe any part of this here, or if you doubt it, I will walk Old Town with you. I will walk downtown with you. It's a lot of places Lent has something.
Pass the library, Lent.
You know, um, nonetheless, it's just places where people have congregated about, you know, half the homeless population is on the west side now between those areas. But, um, nonetheless, it's, you, you can walk all day and you will not see some, a social worker paid by the county. That is going around to tents or to people that are, um, acting out and saying, what can we do? Can we get you on a housing waiting list? Can, can we get you, uh, to a doctor? Can we get you to drug addiction treatment? We're waiting for them, even for shelters. You think that would be the easiest thing, right? Where's the shelter? No, no. If you want to get a shelter and you're living in the streets, you have to call 311. You have to get, uh, numbers of shelters. You have to call the shelters. You have to make a reservation for a shelter space. Then you have to get to Old Town where you get, uh, 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 a, a ticket to go to that shelter. So imagine if you're dealing with schizophrenia or drug addiction, methamphetamine, fentanyl. Now, if you're using fentanyl, you have to use it multiple times a day. So you're in a moment of sobriety. Well, you're like, okay, I'm really tired of this. I want to go someplace. Well, okay. Yeah. Good luck. Call 311, call these other numbers, wait around, hoping you're not going to withdraw at that point in time. Then figure out how to get to Old Town, then wait around for your voucher to go to the shelter. That, that's, that's for the easy stuff. That's for the shelters. Now imagine if you're trying to get services, it's even harder. So that's, that's the problem here is, uh, we're leaving people to live and die on the streets and, and that's just the tragedy. And, and everybody else has to deal with it.
Yeah. I mean, that's what I don't understand though. I think we can, I think we can all agree that people who want drug treatment should get it. But as far as I know, there are three detoxes in Multnomah County and they are always full, always full. And there's a line out the door and those are people wanting treatment voluntarily. And I haven't met anybody, even on the other side of this debate, who says they, they shouldn't access that drug treatment. So where is the energy behind building that out?
Yeah. Yeah. So when Washington County is building this, uh, sobering center, part of that sobering thing is the detox area as well. So there's an intake area, there's a detox area. What are we doing? What are we doing? You know, there's an idea to have more meetings. So the, the most recent, uh, homeless plan that the city and the county bought into is, you know, 40 something pages. It's really large print. So it's not actually like 47 pages of detail.
You're talking about the deflection plan or is that the new agreement with the?
I think it's called HRAP or something, their new homeless plan. Uh, I don't know what the R stands for, but the, uh, uh, you know, the only thing that, what you read in the press is, uh, decrease homelessness by 50%. Now, if you read what the plan for that is, the plan is to have more meetings about making a plan to have that plan. You know, and so it's, it's basically an idea to create some ideas. Now we're, you know, eight years into a housing emergency, according to our city council. We're about 10 years into a very serious homelessness crisis that we've had. Quite a few years into a fentanyl emergency. We have emergencies all over the place. How is it possible our plan is to figure out a plan?
Yeah. And it is funny because I, I remember the report or the, is it a report that you're talking about, the plan? Um, I remember when that came out and I saw that, because to me that was the first time there was established numerical goals, which is still pretty vague, this 50% reduction or whatever. But like you were saying, this is like 10 years into a crisis and that's the first time that I had seen like a.
There's actually a number. I mean, the numbers blow out of thin air. I mean, why 50% versus 53%, right? But, uh, but nonetheless, yeah.
Yeah. And what is the plan for that? So Vidim, I mean, the question I get over and over, I've got one of your, um, yard signs in my front yard. And one of the questions I get over and over again. VoteVidim.com. And, and Vidim has, and has been on Andy's show before. So you can go back and watch that. He's been on Rational in Portland before. You can go and listen to those episodes if you want to learn more about Vidim. And but the questions that I'm getting, they, they, these people that I'm talking to, they would like to see you on Multnomah County. Their concern is, and I, I think you addressed this on the last episode of Rational in Portland, but their concern is that, um, that Sharon Myron has described, and I, I haven't heard anybody counteract it, that Jessica Vega Peterson, as the chair of Multnomah County sets an agenda. And then the commissioners vote yes or no on those agenda items. And my understanding is currently Julia Brem Edwards and Sharon Myron seem to be the only commissioners who, who seem to be at all interested in things like practicality or a plan, or just some sort of an, an action, a system wherein we actually treat a fentanyl emergency like an emergency. And the, the, what I've been saying is, look, we, if we could have a third person, we could have a majority. And then their question is, but how does Vidim get past this agenda that Jessica Vega Peterson sets? Get past things like, you know, a lease for a deflection center that's quietly signed? Gets, gets past secret meetings? How, how do you do that? And I, I, if I remember correctly, on the last episode of Rational in Portland, you said there is something in the county charter that you think, um, you could wield that challenges that plenary power that the county chair currently has, or currently at least wields.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, part of this is, you know, having a person that knows the legal system and is able to, you know, read the laws and read the charter. I'm a lawyer, I'm a judge. Um, certainly I know how to, uh, understand what the regulations are and the policies and how to, uh, get things done. You know, uh, there was a, uh, an analysis by one of our law firms here in Portland that says what the chair is doing is illegal. Point stop, stop right there. Illegal. One of our major law firms here in Portland says that the chair keeping things off the agenda is illegal. Now, since then, the chair has still, has allowed things to be on the agenda more, but then again, we still have the secrecy.
Right. Secret meetings, et cetera.
The preschool, not the preschool, the, uh, the preschool that's suing.
The foil and straw program. That was another secret program that was.
Yeah. You, a lot of the headlines you just read behind closed doors.
Yeah. Yeah. And so why, why is the preschool or the parents of the preschool suing the county over this deflection center? When they said, we're okay with the deflection center, but we want to be part of these discussions. Why are you having closed doors? They're suing because they broke the open meetings laws. It took a lawyer to be able to get things done. All of a sudden, when you get that lawsuit and the lawyer, law firm that, you know, and that analyzed that law, lawyer in this case, um, we understand how to make things work. And that's what I bring to the table. You know, uh, there's a lot of people out there that, you know, might make these claims that they're going to fix everything. I actually have worked in policies. I've worked in analyzing laws. I've done national policies for Medicare, for the US government. I, I worked for the head of the agency in the organization that I, I, at my first job as a federal employee before I became a judge. And so part of that is being able to understand what the laws are, what, what you're allowed to do, what you're not allowed to do. And if someone's doing something that's illegal, you call it out. And that's the same for everybody. That's irrespective of whether you're Jessica Vega Peterson. You call it out. And that's the same for everybody. That's irrespective of whether you're Jessica Vega Peterson that is holding meetings behind closed doors. Or if you're breaking the law on the streets, or if you're a business owner that's breaking the law, or if you're somebody out there that's. Stealing from a business owner, you're breaking the law, you have to call it out. You can't be quiet. Unfortunately, we have too many people that are staying quiet.
What would you do Vadim? Because as much as I like Julia Brim Edwards and Sharon Myron. In that article, and it was Stoll Reeves, which like you said, is an absolutely fantastic law firm. You know, certainly one of the best in the city. And that was April 20th, 2024. That Shane Kavanaugh wrote an article about that in the Oregonian and. The end of the article says that. Sharon Myron, who's a current county commissioner and Julia Brim Edwards, a current county commissioner. Found that legal analysis deeply troubling. So I guess the question would be, what Vadim can you do? Let's say you're elected. My guess is it doesn't end at deeply troubling. How do you take that? Analysis and move it next level so that you can actually change the way the county runs.
Okay. One is you have to request that that rule gets changed because as, as I understand it, that. Super secret executive rule where if you Google it, it takes you to a blank page on the county website that. The chair is saying that allows her to do this. Um, and really it's not about putting this in, it's basically putting things off. Indefinitely. So it never gets onto the agendas, what she's doing. Basically it's a veto is what Stoll Reeve said, and there's no veto that's allowed by the county chair. So, um, you know, one is you have to change that rule and you have to have a vote in order to make that happen. And so you need three votes. We haven't had those two votes. If that rule cannot get changed, well, you need, you know, you have to work within the system. So. I firmly believe that when I'm elected onto the county commission. Jessica Vega Peterson and the other commissioners will work together to change some of these stuff, change some of these things. But if they don't, then you have to work within the system. You get the county attorney to evaluate that. The last resort is, is a lawsuit, you know, Stoll Reeves will I'm sure be glad to file a lawsuit. There's a lot of lawyers. You collect fees and that's what lawyers love. We don't want to pay out fees for no reason, but if someone in our county is breaking the law. We want to make sure we fix that.
And so you're saying it's not just about having a rational majority that can vote. Against cockamamie ideas that the chair puts on the agenda or challenge things like these. The secret rollouts of programs. It's also. You can use that majority, you were saying, if you're elected or, or, you know, Sam, Sam Adams is, would be potentially elected with you. That would give us four votes to challenge the way that that is, the, the way that Chair Jessica Vega Peterson is currently setting that up. And yeah, and so that would put, that would bring that question to the center in a way that we can't really currently do that because we don't have a majority to do that.
Yeah. The county charger, charter is pretty explicit as well as the rules for county meetings. Any commissioner, in fact, the DA as well, can put things on the agenda.
The DA can put things on the agenda?
Cause they're a part of the county and.
Yeah.
Part of the county leadership.
It's a county state, but yeah, they're part of the county. Believe the sheriff as well. Yeah. So it outlines who can put things on the agenda. And, and you know, using a, once again, a super secret rule to subvert these, you know, basically our county charter and. Rules that have been voted into place. Is, is not something that we should stand for. And it's a shame that we don't have more people crying out, saying that this is wrong.
But Vadim, how, let's say you've got your majority. How do you get this gosh darn thing talked about? How do you get it on the agenda?
Yeah. So there, there's various ways. Once, I mean, we talked about what that would look like, uh, you know, hopefully with the cooperation, I think with the majority of individuals on the county commission.
You think they can pressure her to act, to push it on?
That's gotta be the first step, right? I'm not going to file lawsuits on my first day in office. But that's the eventuality that, you know, might need to happen. So that's the first step. But then with, uh, um, three votes on the county commission, you can, uh, uh, call your own special meeting.
That's right. You talked about that on, on the Rational in Portland episode. So you, so you could call a meet, the majority of commissioners. Could call a meeting where they discuss this.
Yes.
And, and that's public and open, correct?
That's just like any other meeting.
And that would put a lot of pressure.
And you can have a vote on that meeting as well. You just have to ratify at the next meeting, but the ratification is also. Something that needs to happen. So, um, you know, you have a special meeting, you have it open to public, you discuss it. You have a vote and then the next, you know, Thursday county meeting, you actually ratify it.
And so would, I'm, I'm assuming the ratification would have to be on the agenda, but at that point, once it's been voted on. Wow. I mean, I.
It's automatic at that point.
Every, it is automatic. So she doesn't have some kind of authority to just forget about it and not put it on there. And I think even if she tried to do that, I, I just find it hard to believe that. The reporters who were starting to really pay attention to the county wouldn't all be in attendance. Talking about how that there was.
And that's why your podcast, both your podcasts is so important here because I think a lot of people are not paying attention to what's happening at the county. And luckily the reporters. Are putting out some good information, Anthony Affinger and, and the Willamette week, you know, we now have Austin. That's riding over there and, and before then, uh, you know, there was a reporting as well. And so the, the question is, the news is getting out. How do we let people understand that if you're upset that, you know, somebody with a mental illness. Is being left on the streets or God forbid, you or your child is being threatened by somebody. With mental illness or drug addiction problems, which happens all the time here in Portland. You actually have an ability to change that, you know, and that's, but that's at the county level that you need to make that change happen.
Yeah. Cause we hear all these city council candidates talking about homelessness and addiction. And Andy is always asking the correct question, which is, well, how do you intend to work with the county? Because the county's purview is homelessness and addiction. It's not. Something that the city participates in.
I do, and it's the, like you said, it's the top issue that everyone I talk to is homelessness and then public safety and.
Yeah. I mean, if you're one of these people that the majority of Portlanders that are unhappy. With the state of homelessness and addiction, look at the county races. And that would be Vadim Mazursky's race and Sam Adams' race. And that's in November.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, uh, you know, my, my race here has basically changed versus status quo. Every organization and, you know, most people that are paying attention that want change is endorsing me. My opponent, all the organizations that are getting funded by the county. Are behind her. So what is that conflict right there? When the organizations that benefit from the status quo are behind one candidate. And the organizations that are like, hey, you know, we can build low cost housing cheaper, but we're not doing it. Hey. We can address homelessness, but we're not doing it. Hey, we can have more places for detox and, you know, there's TMT development, private organization. Is building out a, a transition center because, you know, they have empty space. They're willing to do it. But, you know, we need the county to pay attention and have the ability to work with public, private partnerships. And, um, uh, all the other entities, including law enforcement to make that happen. What we're seeing is it's my way or the highway. And, uh, and we need to change that.
And yeah, we've seen that totally does not work. It hasn't been working. Yeah. I was thinking a couple of things a second ago and I just think it's important that. Somebody like you is considered and, you know, I'm a vote for you. Obviously if, can I even do it? I guess you gotta be in your district. Is it a district thing?
It's district. Yeah.
I would if I could. But one thing I was going to say is I, I think it's important because of all the stuff we talked about today, to have somebody like you who is thinking about planning and knows. How the law works and how the law should work and how we like just talked about have this kind of. Out of control executive power almost being operated with the county right now.
You know what though? I actually don't care. I mean, I do. I obviously we need people in Vadim Mazursky and Sam Adams' district to vote for them because that's, they are proponents of change. But also I don't care what district you're in. You should donate money to these individuals. You should donate money to Vadim Mazursky. Because then we have a rational majority, like my commissioner is Julia Brim Edwards. Julia Brim Edwards can't get anything done because the only person who's going to vote with her is Sharon Myron. We've got no one else. If we had Vadim Mazursky, we could move that ball forward. So I don't think it should, I mean, I mean, they don't have that matching deal that the city has, but it doesn't matter. $5, whatever it is, what, what is your limit? Again, can you remind us please?
It's a $568.
Your limit is $568. So anything between a dollar and $568. Should be thrown the way of people like Vadim Mazursky, who can try to move the county forward on homelessness and drugs. And then talk to your friends and neighbors in that district. Can you please tell us Vadim, what your geographical district is so we know who we need to speak to about voting for you?
Yeah. So my district is everything west in Multnomah County, west of the Willamette. And then inner southeast, so 84th, uh, uh, south of, uh, 84. And then kind of trailing around between 30th street and 40th street, depending on where you look in, in, in her southeast. So. That's a, you know, highly dense populated area between all those. But anybody can contribute. So if you're. If you're out there and you're in, you know, east county and you liked Vince Jones Dixon as your representative. And you think, you know, I, I got an extra 20 bucks sitting around and I want to make sure that we actually get stuff done. You can contribute as well. You don't have to be in my district to vote. You have to be in my district to contribute. You can be anywhere in the, in the world. But, you know, this is one of those things where money unfortunately matters, you know, we think in politics, it's about. Ideas. We think it's about, you know, getting things done, but how do you reach people? You know, that's the difficult part. We have like a hundred people running for office, if you haven't noticed. I think in the, uh, I lost count at this point in time, but in the, uh, the west side, there's, uh. 24 people running for city council, I believe at this point, it might even be a little higher than that. Southeast also in the mid twenties. And then eight mayoral candidates at this point, is that what it is? Yeah. So, and then the county candidates.
Yeah. And I think they need, people need some understanding. I mean, the question is going to be where the money goes. And I think we all see it, you know, I certainly see it. You get a barrage of mailers, right?
Sorry for everybody out there. You're gonna get like, uh, your mailbox is going to be full for the next couple of months.
Yeah. And it's going to be full from everybody and everybody's going to be sifting through it, looking at endorsements, trying to figure out whose side they're on. And I think one thing that's important for you Vadim, why it's so important for people to donate to you. Is because you need to be distinguished from this barrage of city candidates.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. And so the city has matching funds. So the city gives candidates money if you get donations, times nine, exactly. And I don't. And so, you know, that's, that's the difficulty here is, you know, I, I know when I talk to people, they understand what's going on. It's how do I talk to, you know, 150,000 people? And that's, that's a challenge here. So if anybody, you know, is sending a little bit of money, please do contribute. You know, sign up to volunteer. We're, we're having a lot of volunteers that are going out knocking on doors and that's very important as well. And then, um, you know, certainly go to my webpage. If you want to, you know, invite me over to your home and, you know, talk to you and your neighbors, glad to do it.
Vote Vadim.com. There's a button you can donate. It's very simple.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's, that's too important in an election to sit back. You know, my, my concern is we'll have low voter turnout and then you never know. But I'm hoping the more people that are paying attention, the more people come out and vote, the better my chances are of winning.
And then I think the other important thing is, and I know it's not a primary, but you, this is a non partisan race.
Exactly.
So it doesn't matter if you're a non affiliated voter, like so many voters in Multnomah County. It doesn't matter. It's a non partisan race. So you don't need to worry about the fact that you won't be able to vote or about some, some kind of closed election or that you have to take some side or another politically. It's just non partisan. And, and I think you'll find, I mean, you're a Democrat. Your approach is Democrat. We've talked about this. This is, we're in Multnomah County. So this isn't some kind of question about who, um, what side of the, the political spectrum people are on. Vadim is on the side of the, the Democrat side of the political spectrum. And so this idea. That, um, we're, we're going to have to do some deep dive analysis into where he's at is silly. It's a non partisan election. And the question is. Are you concerned about homelessness and are you concerned about drugs? And, and to some extent crime, because they're also dealing with things like jail beds and trying to have capacity to try to incapacitate violent people. And those are things Vadim Mazursky is interested in. And I, I just, um, he needs money so that he can do some of the civic education. Cause most of us don't have that civic education.
Yeah. I was going to say the, the small donor thing with, with the city is kind of proof, like evidence of how much money does matter. The whole reason they started the program and so they compete with like corporate donations and large donations. And so. I agree with you. Like, yeah, you need money to let people know who you are.
And what we're seeing right now is, you know, really a. Subversion of that intent. So for the city. I don't know how mayor runs for mayor in this city with the limits that are in there right now, because there are too many people are running, so they lowered the matching funds. A mayor used to be able to get about $700,000. You know, I think that's what. Ted, Ted Wheeler got last time around and you can buy some airtime with that. You can get information out. Now it's maybe about $300,000. It's really hard to get information out without much money. I mean, it's, it's very expensive to get airtime. And then on the county level, you don't have any matching fund, so it's hard to get information out. What we're seeing right now is. These political action committees that get formed. And so, you know, in the primary. I outraised my opponent, I believe, four to one. And, and when you're talking about individual contributions, it was way more than that. She got a lot of contributions from political action committees that endorsed her and. People elected to office that endorsed her. But anyways, I outraised her a lot. But then I saw in the last couple of weeks in office, um, there was an, uh, organization that. Let me, let me pull it up here. I actually had to look this up because I hadn't looked at this website for a while. Progressive Voice for Oregon. And they raised something like $80,000 within just a short period of time to help my opponent. And so you're seeing, um, basically a subversion of, um, you know, what people believe in, which is, hey, I'll give $20 to this one individual. That'll make a difference. But what we're seeing and I, and my opponent was actually in the Oregonian quoted, saying something the likes of like, she was asked, you know, well, how do you feel about this? And, and she's like, well, you know, I, I, I'm okay with it. It's really hard to win a race without it. Imagine that. Yeah. Yeah. Look it up. I think it was Shane Dixon Kavanaugh that wrote that story. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It was Austin Maldeos that wrote that story. But, uh, but she was asked about it and she's like, I'm, I'm okay with it, you know, but that's what happened. She got way more money. From outside organizations and she was able to raise herself. And, and now we're in the general election because, you know, all those people that contributed to me. Had to deal with the money that rushed in last minute.
I think that word progressive is very misleading. In my opinion. Vadim, you were a progressive and, and in my opinion, it is not progress, crime is not progressive. Drug addiction out of control with no intervention whatsoever. When people's brains have been hijacked by things like drugs and mental illness. And there is no off ramp to acknowledge that addiction is a disease of denial. That's not progressive. I mean, I just, um, that, those are the things that concern me and that's why. Raising money is important and, and it doesn't matter that you outraised her. However, many dollars by individuals, if, if she is getting money from these large organizations. I don't know. I mean. I don't know.
The opposite spirit of the small donor program. Individuals contributing to her, which is kind of the whole idea of it, but, um, but yeah.
And that's why raising money is, is so, I mean, Vadim, your point is well taken. That's why raising money is so important. You have to counteract all that.
For me, I mean, being progressive is helping people that can't help themselves. And so when we were talking about homelessness, drug addiction, mental illness, that right there is what progressives should be, helping people that are unable to help themselves. Instead, we're letting people that can't help themselves live and die on our streets. And to be progressive, you, you have to make progress and we're just not seeing that progress.
I always say it's, it's a regressive kind of environment that we're, but I always tell people to. With street camping in particular, and you know, addiction. That's a lose lose situation for homeowners and people that are, are on the street trying to, because like you said, a lot of them end up dying on the street and don't get the help that they need. And so that's what we've been doing for a long time and it hasn't, hasn't been working. And I always just tell people it's a lose lose. We gotta get people into shelter or treatment and we just haven't been doing.
I mean, that's the odd thing, right? No one's winning about this because we have people suffering on the streets. We also have housed people suffering because a lot of times, uh, you know, whether due to mental illness or drug addiction. First of all. You know, drug addiction comes with, uh, drug dealers and drug dealers are violent. And, and then people have to. And guns, you know, there was an article, you know, also in the Oregonian about, you know, someone did a. Surveillance of one of the camps and they saw human trafficking taking place. They saw people walking out with automatic weapons, drugs coming in.
About gun control? Do we care about me too? Do we care about those things? Are those things progressive? I, I thought they were progressive.
And with mental illness, you know, we hear terrible shocking stories like what happened on the max. When there was an individual going home to his family after our days of, our days of work. His, his wife and six year old son. And the person sitting across from him had a mental illness, heard some voices and stabbed a guy and killed him on the max train. That individual had a history of mental illness, but we're leaving that individual on the streets. Could have helped that individual. First and foremost, we want to help individuals. Secondly. Now we have an individual that died. Third, that individual with the mental illness is going to be in jail for a long time. This is a lose lose situation, no matter how you look at it, but you look at our county and it's full steam ahead. Let's have some change. Let's do practical things. Let's make Portland prosper because we're doing the right thing. Let, let the headlines in New York Times be about how we're actually solving homelessness here. Let, let the headlines in New York Times be about how we're actually solving homelessness here. And, and let's, let's elect some people that are progressive but practical.
Yeah. Yeah. And I was just gonna say, yeah. Reiterate again, and, and thank you so much for coming today, but I was going to reiterate one more time of just how important the county is in control of all that stuff. So we just can't forget that. I really want people to, in, in my mind, maybe there's an optimistic spin, but hopefully it's an easy vote for people in your district because there should just be two bubbles in there as opposed to the city, which is going to be a huge ballot of what district you're going to put.
Right. And I guess to be clear, Vadim, with your, with the voting in November for county, it's, we, we don't have to worry about single transferable vote. That's a city deal, right?
Which is, I know it's confusing.
There needs to be a podcast about that.
But yeah.
But yeah, this is the last year the county is going to have a normal.
Should be a straightforward, yeah, normal.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that people understand that. And is, is, and ranked choice doesn't come into play until next year. Is that correct?
Two years from now, next election.
Excuse me, two years from now.
I was going to ask you about, yeah. On the county level, it's coming two years from now.
Right. So this is just a regular old, what you're used to. Same old, same old, just like other county elections. That's what will happen with the county in November. So don't let that, I know a lot of us are just feeling overwhelmed already about the kind of voter fatigue that would, you know, poor Andy here is pumping out episodes and it, it's just, the queue is incredible. The amount of people you've had on here is incredible. You, Andy, if this was your full-time job, I don't know that you could do it all. I mean, that's how many people we're talking about. The nice thing about the county is it's two races and it's just the same old voting that we've always done.
That's kind of what I was saying is like, if you have voter fatigue and you look at.
First to the county.
Yeah. Just make sure you at least vote for county stuff. I mean, that's really.
Yeah. I don't have to worry about exhausted ballot in my race or any of that kind of stuff.
That's right. You're worried about homelessness and addiction, turn first to the county and just get that done with. And then you can get mired down and all the other stuff, but that, that's an easy way to help address some of these issues in Portland.
As I say, if you're concerned with homelessness or public safety, all that stuff we've been talking about.
Even if you're concerned about potholes in the street, I mean, the city's spending about three hundred million dollars a year in all these services, police overtime, fire bureau, which I understand gets called to about seven thousand calls a year and overdoses.
Mandatory overtime still.
So all these things that the city is funding, including in the past Safe Rest Villages, TOS sites as a Band-Aid because our county is not doing its job. Those things could be used to, you know, fix that sidewalk, you know, pave that street, uh, uh, fix the potholes. Make sure that our police time, uh, response time is, is adequate. And make sure that, you know, if you unfortunately have a, an emergency, that the fire bureau arrives quickly rather than, uh, dealing with other issues that are a result of the failure of the county. So no matter what you're, uh, uh, what, what difficulties you're facing, everybody out there, if the county were to do its job, all of our lives would be a lot easier. So.
That's sounding great. Yeah. Is there anything else you guys want to talk about before we wrap it up here?
Are you going to ask any?
I had one, I had one goofy question. If you, if you want me to ask you, I thought it was.
He's answered so many, but there's gotta be one.
I've never asked this one yet. It's kind of experimental, but if you, I'll ask you first. How about that? Give you a little time to figure it out. Is it okay? Test it out. Okay. If you had to, if you had to dye your hair an unnatural color, like a clown red.
That's not a good question.
Or, or blue or something.
You know how conventional I am.
Was there a color you would do? I'll say, I, I would do, I mean, if I had to do it, blonde doesn't count, right? Like if I did like Andy Warhol.
Didn't you?
White.
Say what color again?
I was saying unnatural, so not like redhead or just any natural hair color.
So unnatural to you or unnatural to the human population? Well, I don't, yeah, I, I think, I think plat, there are, there must be natural platinum.
I would, I would say I'll do.
Eli Arnold comes to mind. He looks like a Kendall.
This would make me look crazy, but I would do clown red. I'm not going to do purple.
I'm going to send that quote to Eli.
That was from my thirteen year old. She was like, he looks like a Kendall. And I, I, he was like, my wife will be thrilled that you said that.
That's, does that make sense though?
Yes. No, I understand.
You just don't want to.
I don't think platinum can be your answer, but so.
I said clown red. I'll do clown red.
No, I think, um.
I would look insane.
I mean, my problem is my age. My problem is, uh.
I think you could do like purple or something.
I, I, and, and the, yeah, I mean, the, yeah, there are so many problems with this for me, but I, I, here's what I'm going to admit. I dabble in the Kardashians.
Okay.
And there was a period of time where, and again, decades younger than me, and I would look completely ridiculous. But Kylie Jenner had like this perfect, in my opinion, for her age, but young teenager, maybe twenty, sort of teal color in her hair. And I, again, my coloring is all wrong. It's all wrong, but I, that I like. I liked it.
It's like a sea, sea green color kind of thing.
Kind of. Yeah.
All right. I'll take, I'll take it. Like I said, I'm sorry. This is the first time I've asked this, Vadim. I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm not really made sure what color teal is. I, it's like, like blue or blueish green, blueish green. Is that what it is?
I think it's blue green. Yeah.
You will learn soon when your, um, when your daughter is, uh, into colors, obsessed with colors. Yeah.
She's already picking out her outfit. So, uh, you know, later.
It's not surprising.
Yeah. Yeah. She, she's, she's pretty cute. I, I, I put books in front of her. She chooses what book she wants to read. And I put outfits and then she chooses an outfit. So I don't know what goes on there, but something happens. You know, for me, I saw, I'll give you an answer and a caveat. So, um, you know, a question I get or a comment I get quite often is like, hey Vadim, I, I don't believe you're a judge. You don't, you don't look like a judge. So I would dye my hair gray. So I look, I look judicious or something, you know?
But that's a natural color.
I think it's on the border though, because it's.
Platinum, let's go platinum, whatever.
People aren't really born with gray, right? I mean, rare, rarely maybe.
Okay, fine. I guess I'd do the same thing. That, that will probably look better on me than teal, even though it would age me by like thirty years.
I was also thinking, I'm glad, we just happen to have three people that all have hair. So I'm just.
I think that's so silly. I think you look very judicial.
Well, I appreciate it. I appreciate, but it is a comment I get. I, I, hopefully it means that I look.
They think you walk, you're supposed to walk around in a black robe or something?
You're supposed to look like you're old and tired is that look that people are going for, you know?
You got those old. Parliament wigs.
And you got that robe and you, anyways.
You're right. Haggard.
Haggard. Yeah. 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 So, you know.
You're too fit. Vadim, you're too fit. Your genetics betray, those Ukrainian genetics just like betray you.
I, I try to get in my sleep, but you know, the, the, the real answer is it's not your question, but I, I would shave my hair altogether.
That's a good, I like.
Well, I mean, it takes so much time to like, you know, wash your hair and do all that kind of stuff. Like I'm, I'm busy. Yeah. You know? And so for me, it's as soon as I can get out the door, as soon as I can get stuff done. And so with, I imagine just waking up in the morning and my hair's all, you don't have to take a shower, right?
I don't think Karina would love that. I don't think Karina would love that. I don't know, but I don't know, but.
No, no.
She probably likes your hair.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I, I'd have to pass it by a few people first, but.
Yeah, we're probably number one. So Vadim, I mean, I, I know, I love those goofy questions, but what else did we not discuss that you think is important that people need to know?
Yeah. I mean, those are the important things, you know, what, what we need right now is just a voice standing up for people who live here in Multnomah County in Portland. You know, I mentioned this a little bit, uh, the deflection center was going on. I was right there testifying at deflection center saying, we need a plan. Well, guess what? We didn't have a plan and now it's postponed. And now they're coming up with a haphazard plan where there's some vans that are supposed to be driving around and the police are supposed to wait for people until this van arrives. And it, it's all last minute, but I was there discussing it. So ambulance crisis. I was there testifying in city hall saying, pass this resolution, asking for, you know, a test of one EMT, one paramedic, and it got passed unanimously by city hall, went to Jessica Vega Peterson and then died for a bunch of months until they decided to do it anyways. I'm there trying to represent people as, from what, talking to them, from working in neighborhood associations, from hearing from them. My opponent is not. And so if you're out there and you feel helpless or you feel a home, uh, or you feel hopeless, or you feel that no one's listening to you or you're emailing, and I get the story a lot, you email your representative, no one answers you in response. That's why I'm running for office to hear from you and to get things done and make sure your life is better. Make sure that life of your kids, my kids are better. And that's what it's all about.
Yeah. Yeah. And, um, as you said, both of those examples, I think are good things of like, if you're concerned with those and Vadim was on the county commission at those times, we could have had a drastically different situation right now. But yeah, thanks for testifying and thanks for coming today. And yeah, vote Vadim.
Thank you. Anything, Chris. It's fun. It's fun. Appreciate it.